Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call the public hearing and special meeting of May 13th, 2024 to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Councillor Sikala.
Here.
Councillor Crissati.
Here.
Councillor Finger.
Here.
Councillor Hendrickson.
Here.
Councillor Ludwig is absent. Councillor Mangini is absent. Councillor Nasuda is absent. Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councillor Santinella.
Here.
And Councillor Angier, absent. Seven members are present, four are absent.
Thank you. In the event of a fire or an emergency, there's two means of exits out of the council chambers. Exit out the rear doors and walk a safe distance away from the building, or exit through the side doors, go down one flight of stairs, out the rear doors, and a safe distance away. Moving on, we will start the public hearing regarding the proposed modification of the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Finance Master Plan, also known as TIF. The ground rules for the public hearing are, there is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time, so everyone will have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, I shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals who desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals who desire to speak a third, fourth, et cetera. Please refrain from personalities. All right, Chris.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I think that the memo that we had circulated and the notice of the public hearing explained what we're doing. We have a TIF district. That stands for Tax Increment Financing. The town passed this policy and program back in 2019, and we did it for a period of 20 years. At that time, we didn't know how long we wanted to do it. It was new in the state. I think we were the second town to adopt it. You're allowed to have adopted it for up to 50 years. So simply tonight, we're not changing any of the policy. We're simply extending it another 10 years, so that a project we're going to discuss this evening and others that come along will be able to apply this to them. So nothing's changed, other than the fact we'll be able to do it for another 10 years.
And this is at no cost to the taxpayers of Enfield?
Correct. This is budget neutral. This is simply extending the 10 years that we're able to utilize the program, and I'll explain later how we're using it in this case.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone like to come up and speak? Going for the first time? Second time? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion's made and seconded.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? What was that? Oh, all right. Okay, we're gonna move on. New business, a resolution extending the Midtown Enfield TIF District Sunset additional 10 years. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council amends Section 8, duration of the Tax Increment Financing District of the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing Master Plan as follows: The TIF district will remain in place for a period of 20 years from adoption. The terms of the Midtown TIF district is 20 years commencing on the date that the plan is approved by the legislative body of the town and ending 20 years from such approval date. Is deleted and is replaced with the duration of the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing Master Plan shall be for a period of 30 years commencing as of the plan's June 3, 2019 adoption date. Date prepared, 5/6/24, prepared by Department of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Motion's being seconded. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none? Roll call.
Councillor Sikala.
Four.
Councillor Crissati.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Four.
Councillor Hendrickson.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councillor Santinella.
And Councillor Angier.
Four.
Eight members in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on to the resolution authorizing the transfer of TIF funds for eligible activities for Enfield Marketplace Project. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made: Two, new account-created Enfield Marketplace TIF Eligible Projects Funds. New Account Object $500,000 from Midtown Enfield TIF District. Appropriate Object $500,000. Respectfully submitted, Department of Economic and Community Development. So moved. Motion's made and seconded. Questions, comments? So, you want to go, John? Go ahead.
So I would just like, if the town manager could just opine on what this is and why this is important, that we do this, if that's okay with you.
Exactly.
Thank you. We're doing the first part of the business meeting. I thank all of our friends, staff, and our boards and commissions, and members who have come, as well as members of WNSonia who are here. I think everybody's anxious to get to their presentation, because that's the meat of the matter. These are all the technical details of the global plan, which we have negotiated with this group, WNSonia, and Landmark, plus the council, with input from our state counterparts and state agencies. The TIF district was voted in 2018. What we did, we circled, you can do up to 10% of your community, we're at about 7%. We circled, there's a central business district, and there's the Thompsonville district. One is the square. That's the one we're talking about this evening. But what the TIF district allowed at that time is that the assessments of all the properties in the TIF district would be frozen in time. So in 2018, whatever your assessment was, it was frozen in time. It didn't mean it didn't go up over time, but it meant that it was frozen for the purposes of the TIF district. The state gave us a tool to use, so that we can be competitive with the other states in the country trying to attract businesses to our state of Connecticut. And they were limited. When I go back 30-something years, we had very few tools, except in manufacturing. State knew there was a need, and they expanded it. So what happens now, we look today, under the TIF district, we have a fund. The money that is in the fund is $1.5 million. It's not our general fund. It was funded by this operation of the TIF. So in 2018, I'm just gonna use the example, $100,000 property. Now we're in 2024. The first $100,000 always will go to the taxes of the town. So everything up to what your value was in 2018, that goes to the town. The difference, though, as properties have increased in value from 2018 to 2024, that difference, 50%, again, goes to the town for our general purpose and revenues, but 50% goes into that TIF fund. And the TIF fund has been growing, so we haven't utilized it. There's $1.5 million. What was the TIF fund for? The TIF fund was for the purpose you're now voting. We have taken $500,000 from the TIF fund to put in a special account. WNSonia is going to match that with $500,000. Our Director of Finance will control the costs, and what it will be used for is specifically what was enumerated in the statute and in our policy. It will be for preparation of costs, development, acquisition, although we're not assisting in the acquisition. I want to make it clear, because I promised the councillor to say, we don't own the square. People have advocated the town should do this. It's a private entity. So what we've done is work in partnership with a private developer, the town, and our state partners. So other costs may include planning, appraisals, environmental reports, legal studies, and to that fact, we'll be able to access the fund for grant writers, and you'll see some of the grants we're going for at the end, for attorney's fees to do a credit enhancement agreement under the TIF. But all of that is collaboratively put in. We will monitor it. That was the purpose of it. And when Sony has agreed upon the successful completion, and when they start construction and we'll put in the agreement, they will reimburse us back the $500,000. So that isn't required under the TIF, but they have offered to do that, and the council accepted. So that's the purpose of it. This is the first purpose of the TIF, and I ask you to act favorably upon it, and then I'll get into the other two areas that we're asking you to act on tonight. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. And I'd just like to say, I think this is a very reasonable and fair accommodation for what the ultimate scope of the project is. So thank you.
Right. And I'll just, I don't want to take the, but we had to put in, I mean, this is anticipated to be a $250 million project, a $250 million investment into Enfield. So I echo that sentiment. I think this is well worth it, to help them be successful for Enfield. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, anyone else? Deputy Mayor Pisner.
So I just want to say, I was on the original TIF committee. I was then on economic development before I was on council. And when we put this TIF together, this was our vision, was to bring in developers. So I am very pleased to see what this is being used for today.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Councillor Sikala.
Four.
Councillor Crissati.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Four.
Councillor Hendrickson.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councillor Santinella.
Four.
And Councillor Angier.
Four.
Eleven members, sorry, eight members, for and none against.
Okay, moving on to a resolution regarding a tax assessment agreement. Resolution authorizing the transfer of the TIF funds for eligible activities for market, Enfield Market, no, wrong one. Move to the next one. Resolution regarding a tax assessment agreement. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council authorizes Town Manager Christopher W. Bronson to sign a tax assessment agreement with Woodsonia acquisitions for a period of 10 years, commencing with the grand list of October 1, 2024, and ending with the grand list of October 1, 2033, setting the assessed valuation in an amount of $7,262,250, which agreement will be subject to the review and approval of the town attorney. Respectfully submitted, Department of Economic and Community Development. Motion's made and seconded. Questions?
Thank you. I've been saying, excuse me, Mitch and Drew, WNSonia. I know it's Woodsonia, because Steve elbowed me in the ribs. Reminds me I used to be in court sometimes, and I'd be kept on addressing the judge by the wrong name. And Maria, our former assistant, would be sending me notes, Chris, Chris. So I apologize. But what this is, these projects are extraordinarily expensive. It's not as though you buy a piece of green land and put up a house. We're going into an area of the mall, hundreds of thousands of square foot of old property. You don't really know what you're gonna get completely. You do remediation, you do testing, but there are costs associated with tearing it down, trucking it away, and then dealing with what you find. So that's why I think you see across Connecticut and the state, not many of these mall projects work, because it takes a lot of commitment. We couldn't be doing it without the support of these tools the state has given us, and also, we'll be looking for a commitment from the state of Connecticut, and that'll be our last order of business. We can't do it alone. It takes a team. We need public-private coordination and collaboration to make these work. Now, I'm gonna hand this out, full disclosure, this is what it looks like. We've done these. We're setting the assessed rate at the property for 10 years. It'll commence in 2026. The property will be assessed at $7.3 million, give or take. Now, that's a compromise. I'm not gonna get into, we have a tax appeal with the prior owners, NADMAR. They will not avail themselves of this agreement if Woodsonia isn't successful in developing the mall. It will be null and void. It only pertains to these gentlemen. So you look at what our assessed value is, it gives consistency and predictability, both to Woodsonia to know what their costs are, and also to the town and Mr. Wilcox to know that we'll have level funding for those 10 years. Now, if you look at it, we will generate about $230,000 a year. This doesn't include personal property. But while some may say, well, you know, we're giving them a break, we're reducing it. Well, we are, but what you have to know is, the two years or so when they demolish, that property comes down to be almost worthless. It's just the value of the land. This gives us an income stream during those years. And it'll last for 10. We'll have that money coming in. Now, the only caveats are, the mill rate is always unknown, but we know what the assessed value will be, so it'll be close. John has projected that, and in past agreements, he's been right on. So that's the agreement, the first part, for 10 years to assist these folks. And the town attorney's office will primarily be responsible preparing this document for your review later, but that's what it is.
Thank you. And I know, to not really get too much into it, but I know there was some discussion, and you sort of alluded to that, that this fixed assessed number may be less if we don't have this sort of thing.
Thank you, Councillor Sikala. In truth of fact, the prediction is, if we kept the value at the higher value it's assessed currently, in two, three years, because it continues to depreciate and become deteriorated, we would actually be making less than with this freeze. So this freeze, in the latter years, I think the last five or six, we'll actually be getting more taxes than if we left it at the current assessment. And I thank you for reminding me of that.
Thank you. I think I'm good right now. Actually, I'm sorry. So I know that this resolution wasn't in the packet. I don't know if it was on the website. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could just go through the highlights really quickly, if you want to read that, or I can, it doesn't really matter, just so people sort of get an overview of what the highlights are. We're kind of doing this backwards. We're not hearing the presentation before we're voting on all of it, but we're going to get to it, so people understand what we know and why we're voting the way we are.
And to agree with you, I believe the mall already did appeal the taxes once, which lowered it, and this protects the town from that happening again. So I will read the highlights, but I just, for clarification, these resolutions say Woodsonia on them. Should we change it?
No, I was wrong in saying WNSonia, because they're a winning team, and that was in my mind.
So it is Woodsonia.
It is Woodsonia.
So, okay, so we're correct. Correct. All right. I know my grammar's not the best, but I know how to read, so. Highlights. Woodsonia acquisitions and NADMAR Group have negotiated a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the Enfield Square Mall. Woodsonia, why can't I say this word? Acquisitions intend to construct a mixed-use development named Enfield Marketplace. This project is estimated to cost $250 million, and it is anticipated that it will include numerous retail and restaurant spaces, over 450 residential units, two hotels, walking and bike paths. There will be no budget impact, and the recommendation is that we do accept this. So.
Can I just sort of give my last, and then I'll yield the floor? So thank you for reading the highlights, and thank you for sort of giving that overview, because I want people to really understand that this fixed value that we're assigning in those first couple of years could actually be lower if we do nothing with this property. And "we," meaning although we don't own it, but work in partnership with any developer that comes in. So this is sort of a great opportunity for Enfield. I know tax agreements are touchy subjects with some. I think that a project of this magnitude coming to Enfield can only mean great things. And I know that the Enfield Mall has been a subject of great discussion over the last few years, so I am very excited to see what is to come with this property. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Gina. John?
I just was wondering, did we run any estimates on what we believe the personal property tax opportunity is in the later part of this timeline at all?
Yes, John has done some preliminary numbers that will be subject, obviously, to the final businesses, retail and use, but it could probably be in the vicinity of $200,000 a year personally.
Twice what we're looking at now is the revenue stream. Okay. Thank you very much.
Right. Anyone else? And I just want to say, to be clear, this is not costing the taxpayers a cent. This is just freezing the value where it's at now, along with what Councillor Sikala said, and it actually benefits the taxpayers, because if we do nothing, the value's gonna go down. We all know it. So I also will be supporting this. Questions? You good, Mike? This is for the tax assessment freeze. All right. Roll call, please.
Councillor Sikala.
Four.
Councillor Crissati.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Four.
Councillor Hendrickson.
Four.
Councillor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Councillor Santinella.
Four.
And Councillor Angier.
Four.
Ten members in favor, none against.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the whole resolution, because I think you're correct, Councillor Sikala. This is kind of doing it backwards. This is a resolution regarding the credit enhancement agreement. The highlights are, Woodsonia acquisitions and NADMAR Group have negotiated a purch, is that the same one I just read? Resolution authorizing the town to submit a community investment fund, CIF, 2030 application to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, CTDECD for short, for the Enfield Marketplace Project. The highlights are, on April 29, 2024, the CTDECD issued a notice of funding availability for the fifth round of the CIF 2030 program, designed to support historically disadvantaged communities across the state, with up to $175 million each fiscal year from '22 to '27.
Mr. Mayor, that's, you're reading the last one. This is the credit enhancement agreement, not the community investment.
Yeah, it's squeezing the blood out of my brain. See, I don't wear ties, but for you guys, I did. The resolution regarding credit enhancement agreement, Woodsonia.
Acquisitions.
That's why I have her as my deputy mayor. And NADMAR Group have negotiated a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the Enfield Square Mall. Woodsonia acquisitions intends to construct a mixed-use development named Enfield Marketplace. This project is estimated to cost $250 million, and it is anticipated that it will include numerous retail and restaurant spaces, over 450 residential units, two hotels, walking and bike paths. The proposed project will create an increase in valuation for the Enfield Midtown TIF region. There will be no budget impact. The recommendation is that the town council adopt the resolution. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council authorizes Town Manager Christopher W. Bronson to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Woodsonia acquisitions, commencing with the grand list of October 1, 2034, and ending with the grand list of October 1, 2043. After review of a submitted application by the TIF Advisory Council and their approval, and final review of the agreement by the town attorney, respectfully submitted, Department of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded.
And with that, Alex will put up the chart. This represents what will happen in 10 years. Gosh willing, we'll all be here to see it. If you look at the top, at that point now, we anticipate the assessment, and John's being conservative, but the assessed value of the improvements would be approximately $91 million. Now, if you drop down, you see, okay, what will the assessed value be under the TIF? Now, remember I said earlier, we're doing a freeze right now at 7.2. That'll last the 10 years. The end of the 10 years, it will bump up, because I said the TIF, in 2018, we assessed the value of the mall forever, in perpetuity, at $12.8 million. So that'll go up by $5 million at that point. But we anticipate also that increased value will be $78 million. So if you look it down, I know it's small, but the anticipated taxes, and again, this is just subject to what the mill rate will be, and the final assessed numbers, but the projection is, we will then go to the mall being responsible to pay $3,029,000 a year. $3,029,000 a year it will go up to. Under the TIF agreement, 50% and the initial basis, as I told you, will go to the town. So that will be, the town will be getting at that juncture, one, well, the general fund, $2 million. Under the TIF, we have the right to rebate up to the 50%. So basically, it's a turnaround. They pay in the taxes, we keep the lion's share, they get refunded 1.5, again, not taxpayer money, it's TIF money, money that would have gone in that TIF account, and that will go on for 10 years. The bottom shows it will be diminished. Woodsonia had agreed, it won't remain 50%, 100% of that each year for the 10. It will decline. So what they pay will go up, and the bottom line shows, the first year, we give them 100% of their 50, which is $1,005,000. It goes down to 98, 96, 94, 92, 90, 88, 86, 84, 82%. And again, that's not all their whole taxes, that's just their 50%. And then at that juncture, the town will be receiving the full amount of the taxes at that time, between $3 and $4 million a year. So this is very good. This is allowable under the TIF. And in point of fact, folks, this is the only thing we can use that TIF money for. You know, the money we're giving in the $500,000 of the pursuit costs that we're matching, and that they're gonna refund, this likewise, we can't spend this money for anything else, other than the development or credit enhancement under the TIF, under state law. So we're using it for exactly the purpose that it was envisioned. You can see in 10 years, our taxes are gonna go from the basis of around $250,000 to $2 million, plus the personal property, and then that will go down each year till it expires in the year 2045.
Questions? You good, John? No, I'm, oh, go ahead, Mike.
I know I'm way to the party here. So I know you've probably already explained this, so I just want to make sure. So that money that's there, reminder, again, and when you mean goes to the town, it actually, the goal is to actually redevelop the TIF, that TIF district. And I'm sure you explained, I know you did, because I know you're very thorough, where that TIF district leads to. And that's why we set this up a few years ago, is the point is, this money is gonna benefit the district, which again, the goal is to hopefully connect the mall to the river. And I'm sure you already explained that, but could you, if you haven't?
Don't be sure of anything, which we might.
Just remind why we set it up.
Well, no, the reason we did it.
The mall to the river.
Well, we were hoping that we would be able to use this in the future, and here we are, that we're able to utilize it. And it's one of the few tools that the state gives us. Remember, most, always, I mean, we have to rely on our property tax exclusively. We get no amount from sales tax or any of those revenues. So we have to be innovative. So this allowed us to circle this area, as you discussed, to try to build it up. And in fact, the reason we're doing this second is because the first 10 years, as values increase, every time they invest millions there, the property values in that TIF district will rise. They will go into the TIF, and we will be able to use it to help other businesses in this zone to develop as well. Then, at the end of the 10 years, when we do the credit enhancement, then it will be directed towards them as a rebate of money they are paying to us.
Key point, and appreciate that. We did this so long ago, people may forget why we did it, and we connected the mall to the river. So thank you.
Well, in government, you have to be patient. When we did it, you figured, oh, my goodness, it'll be right away. We had COVID, we had all the other challenges, and now here we are, less than 10 years later. And we have this tool, because previous councils saw the wisdom of doing it, that we're able to bring these developers here and make a partnership. And the next resolution will be our partners at the state, and we're gonna ask them to help too. We've been in touch, and I'll address that at the next resolution.
Great. Councillor, you're good? Councillor Crissati?
Yeah, I'm gonna be in agreement with the, I'm gonna be in agreement with the credit enhancement agreements. I think, once again, I think you were very thorough in stating to everybody that, you know, we're gonna be allowing the town to provide reimbursements of future incremental property tax revenues that they're gonna be dealing with. So I think that is key. Very, very well played out in everything that you stated here. So I am in agreement. It was part of the original TIF program, and to see it come to fruition is pretty exciting. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is the town's skin in the game. This is what we're able to do. And in the next resolution, we're gonna look to our state partners, because again, this is subject to permitting and to regulatory oversight, and also the state helping us with this project to make it successful. But we've been transparent, I know that's overused today, but we've given the global deal. Everything that we've negotiated with the town, and what we're gonna be doing with the state, is contained in these resolutions and these two charts, which we're making available to everyone. So everyone is aware, if they take the time to look at what we've presented, there's nothing else that we're doing here. This is all the full 100% of our project that we're working with, Woodsonia and Landmark Realty, their partners.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else? Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Councilor Sikala?
Four.
Councilor Crisati?
Four.
Councilor Finger?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
10 members in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on. This is a resolution authorizing the town to submit a community investment fund, CIF 2030, application to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for the Enfield Marketplace project. Highlights, on April 29th, 2024, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development issued a notice of funding availability for the fifth round of the CIF 2030 program designated to support historically disadvantaged communities across the state with up to $175 million each fiscal year from '22 to '27. The town, in partnership with Woodsonia Acquisitions, desires to seek the necessary grant funding for the redevelopment of the Enfield Square Mall. This grant program requires a certified resolution from the governing body of each town to be submitted as part of the grant application endorsing the project's grant application. There is no budget impact. The recommendation is the town council adopt the following resolution. Whereas pursuant to CGS Section 32-285A, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects and, whereas it is desirable and in the public's interest that the town of Enfield make an application to the state not to exceed $20 million in order to undertake the Enfield Marketplace project and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Enfield Town Council, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites of the state's financial assistance imposed by Connecticut General Statute Section 32-285A, and two, that the following of an application for the state financial assistance by the town of Enfield in the amount not to exceed $20 million is hereby approved, and that the town manager, Christopher W. Bromson, or his designee, is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for the state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Enfield, respectfully submitted, Department of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Boy, I hope they come through, making me read all these big words. Councilman Santinella?
Yeah, so, through the merit of the town manager. So I know that this is a very large ask for this program, and previously, the largest CIF grant, as we've discussed, and I know you know this, I'm just saying this for the benefit of the public. So the largest grant was somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 million, is that correct? Somewhere in that area? I mean, this is a unique ask, as we've discussed, because unlike most of the other CIF grants that have been extended, they are all money out with no sort of attached revenue stream back from whatever that investment is. You offer money to take down a building, the building's gone, the money's gone. Here, we're asking for a investment in a parcel that's actually going to generate revenue back to the state in terms of sales tax revenue, which, do you remember? I don't remember the exact annual amount. Was it $5 million? Is that-
No, it was significantly more, but-
Okay. I hope I'm not stealing your speech.
No, no.
But I'm hoping that, I guess my hope is, is that we're able to impress upon the state in our application that we're in a unique position, that this is not, that they also are a beneficiary to this, unlike some of the other applications that they've received. So I just wanted to offer that perspective again.
And we will accentuate that in the application, and we'll take a copy of your testimony, we'll send it to them. It was, it was accurate and persuasive. Exactly so. The last, we've been fortunate, we received, the last CIF grant from the state was about $11 million for Enfield housing. So we're on their radar. We do a good job here in Enfield, and they recognize it. And I would like, at this juncture, to thank the governor, because his office has been instrumental in helping us and reaching out. This, this has implications with the Department of Transportation, to the DEP with wetlands, to their Office of Economic Development. The governor's chief of staff, Jonathan Dax, has been incredible in coordinating with me and our staff and helping us reach out to those other agencies. Likewise, Matt Paglisi is the deputy commissioner of the DECD. He has been very helpful in advising us. This CIF, this community investment funding is a separate part, or I guess it's sort of a commission, and John Kissel and Carol Hall are here, they've been involved in this from the beginning as well, and they're going to assist us too. But we've got to make the application, and then this commissioner board reviews it. So hopefully, given the uniqueness of it, as you've articulated, John, that they'll look favorably upon it and help us as best they can. Also, we will also be filing, we wanted to do this resolution tonight because the first, this grant application is due in June, our grant writer has been involved in communication, we'll start on that right away. And then there's brownfield money available to actually do assessment and remediation, depending on what they find, and we also anticipate filing for that. But as I said, this is the perfect example of a private-public partnership, and the public part is the town, and it's the state. And together, we can make a difference. But we have to, I've been, in the last couple of years when I was here, we competed with other, not towns in Connecticut, that's a given as well, but other states, where they come in and say, well, why can't you give us, you know, just debate all the property? Well, we don't have the ability to do it. Why can't you cut our electric bill? Well, we don't have an electric plant. So other states have a leg up in a lot of areas, but this is what we've been given, and I think it's effective if we all work together. And I have every hope that our state legislators and the governor's office will continue to help us with this. And again, being on, they call it in migration, we're not in the center of the state. So when we do a project like this, a lot of the market research is showing that we're bringing new businesses, we're bringing new residents into the town. You could have a couple thousand people coming into these, to this marketplace housing that are going to shop here. We're going to have all the jobs, I'm going to leave it to them to explain, of the construction work, and then all the new employees at these retail and restaurant businesses. So it's very exciting. I thank the council for your intention and patience, we've been working on this for over six months. I thank my staff. I think it's almost a minor miracle that, given the scope of this project, that there was never a whisper, there was never a leak. We've had a lot of private meetings, and everybody held the information because they knew how important this was to Enfield. So I thank everybody that's been involved. I thank all of our boards and commissions for coming, we look forward to working with all of you, and I think we're going to make this together a successful project. So I ask you to vote favorably on this, and we will make the application in June.
That sounds like a challenge, Chris, because, you know, I believe in three times is a charm. So Representative Hall and Kissel have gotten us the land for the fields, they got the money forgiven for hail, so this is the number three. It's just three simple things, that's all we're asking of you. Finish it up, and we're good to go. Anyone else seeing on roll call?
Councilor Sikala?
Four.
Councilor Crisati?
Four.
Councilor Finger?
Four.
Councilor Hendrickson?
Four.
Councilor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner?
Four.
Councilor Santinella?
Four.
And Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
10 members in favor, none against.
All right, now we can move on to the good stuff. What he wants to say.
Mitch, I would ask Mitch Holan and Mr. Snyder, Drew, to come on up, and I want to stop talking so I don't make any other mispronunciations or mistakes. They represent Woodsonia, and they also have partners that are part of this, Landmark Group. I think you're going to find this very, very exciting and very, very promising. Gentlemen.
Great. Everybody hear us? Is this okay? Great, okay. Well, Chris, Enfield community, this is fantastic. I don't think we've ever had a better welcoming, so, and branding us Winning Sonia, is that what the name was? Actually, we may do a name change, so I do kind of like that, I like, like how it sounds. But anyway, I'm Drew Snyder, this is Mitch Holan, my business partner, we're very excited to be here. We have been working on this project for about six months. We're actually Midwestern-based, we're based in Omaha, Nebraska, and are here. We have a longstanding relationship with Namdar Realty, which is interesting, and so I won't go into all the details on that, but that's what led us to Enfield and our interest in this property and this redevelopment project. And so we're very excited to roll up our sleeves and get started with this project. We prepared a presentation today, and I'm not a big tech guy, but I'll see if I can get us through this without too many problems, so.
The mouse should work.
Oh, can I use the mouse? Yeah. Oh, that'd be great. Okay. Oh, look, I can point to things. Did I just click? Oh, there we go. Okay. All right. We have just a brief agenda, we'll take you through, we'll talk a little bit about our team, our experience. We do have quite a bit of experience with mall redevelopments, and so this is not our first rodeo. And we'll talk a little bit about the current status of the square, I think it's known as the square, we were maybe mispronouncing it as the Enfield Square, but the square. We'll talk a little bit about our redevelopment plan, and then we've got some economic statistics that we can go over with the project, so. Here you are, you're looking at us, and you can see us on the screen, you can see us in person. So again, I'm Drew Snyder, president of Woodsonia, Winning Sonia, and my business partner here, Mitch Holan. So we, our company has been in business for 13 years. We are primarily focused on mixed-use retail development projects. We go across the United States, we're very opportunistically driven. We have over 75 different projects, from large shopping centers to apartment complexes to single-family subdivisions. So we've, we've got our fingers involved in a lot of different types of assets on the real estate side, all predominantly real estate-focused. We don't, we don't own or run a lot of operating businesses or anything like that. So that's a little bit about the team and us. And I should back up, and Chris mentioned too, there's also a group that started this project with us called Landmark Property and Development. I want to give them a little recognition. Joren Peterson is their name. They've been very helpful and instrumental in helping us kind of with some of the initial due diligence, and just getting your arms around a project of this size, and so they weren't able to make it. The largest real estate convention in the world's in Las Vegas, and that's here in a couple of days. So I think they're preparing for that, and weren't able to make it, but just want to mention those guys as well. Jumping into experience, we've purchased several enclosed malls, and we really cut our teeth in Council Bluffs, Iowa, with a mall called Mall of the Bluffs. This was a Namdar mall. So most of these, I think, are previously owned by Namdar Realty. That was a 350,000-square-foot enclosed mall, essentially same story as Enfield, had completely fallen into disrepair. The enclosed mall business is really a broken business model at this point. As we all know, e-commerce, online retail is here to stay, it's not a fad, and it's had a huge impact on brick-and-mortar retail, and that would include enclosed malls. And so, but a lot of these mall sites are very well-located, so they're optimal for large mixed-use redevelopments or retailer-led redevelopment projects, things of that nature. Mall of the Bluffs was a great example. There's a large home improvement store in the Midwest called Menards, if anybody's ever heard of them. Slogan, save big money at Menards, and they wanted to do a store relocation, and so that was what started the project. So like I mentioned, it was an opportunistic project. Menards was our lead anchor. We acquired the entire mall, we demolished everything, so everything came down. There was a grocery store that was there, similar to Enfield, where Target will stay. You do have a successful Target store here that we anticipate staying. And so there was a grocery store there called Hy-Vee, if anybody's ever heard of Hy-Vee, that's another Midwestern chain. They remained in the project, and it's now completed. So that was one of our first enclosed mall projects. Here's another one, the Conestoga Mall. That was a 550,000-square-foot enclosed mall in a smaller community, probably more similar to Enfield size, called Grand Island, Nebraska. So it's kind of more in our backyard. This was, we talked a little bit with Chris and his team, this was our first lesson in not keeping, we've made a few mistakes, and we kept some of the mall space here, and I think in hindsight, we wish we would've just demolished everything. It's very difficult to try to get retailers to fit in some of the old mall spaces and sizes, and really what we found, we thought we were saving costs by doing that, and I think it ended up ultimately costing us maybe a little bit more. Some of the depths, some of the space sizes aren't ideal, and so, but that was a little bit about Conestoga. Conestoga Mall was Target-led, so Target was the anchor retailer that anchored that project. It's actually under construction right now, it's about a $250 million project as well. There's a new IHG brand hotel, there's a multifamily component in this project as well. So true mixed-use project, similar to what we're talking about here in Enfield as well. This is just the site plan, the new square footage that's being built in this project is 350,000 square feet. Cash Valley Mall is a very recent project, we just closed on and are underway with, probably a little bit smaller. It's a 25-acre site in Logan, Utah. It was the former home of the Cash Valley Mall, same story, every single anchor, was dark, there was hardly any tenants left, very, very well-located site, it's about 26 acres. Namdar had done a similar structure here, where they had gone in and sold some of the out parcels, or some of the outlying restaurants, that's what's happened here in Enfield as well. Creates a little bit of additional complications trying to keep those folks operational as we're underway with a large demolition and redevelopment project. But this is a really exciting project, this was also anchored by Target, so Target's going to build a new 150,000-square-foot store here. There was about 15, this was a little bit more viable, there was about 15 existing tenants in the mall. There'll be a multifamily component to this as well, 350, or 315, excuse me, multifamily units, and about a $200 million project. So that is the, that was another enclosed mall example, just to give you some perspective on our experience. These are some renderings, I think pictures are always kind of worth a thousand words, and the multifamily part of this project turned out really beautiful. We were really happy with some of the aesthetics, so you can see a few pictures here, these are some of the renderings. So with that, let's talk a little bit about Enfield, the square. I don't know if you can see it, but everything in red is what is currently owned by Namdar that we have a contract to purchase on. I will say, the Target has subsequently been sold off, so Target is actually on a ground lease in this situation, so they own their, their building per se. A gentleman out of New York City owns the ground, so a little bit of complication there. But we'll have to try to work around the existing restaurants up on the north, and then you can see, everything in black is vacant, and I think there's some statistics down on the bottom there. Sorry, my eyes are getting bad, but the total mall square footage is 570,000 square feet, and 490,000 square feet of that is now vacant. So it is a significant portion, it's 85% of the mall square footage is vacant. The, there's temporary tenants, so Namdar, and this is not just Namdar, this is a lot of other mall owners, just to keep some basic income coming in. What we call sort of temporary tenants, not long-term tenants that are spending and investing money in the space, there's about 51,000 square feet of those. So actually occupied by what we would consider long-term, maybe national tenants, is really only about 29,000 square feet, so a very small fraction, 5% of the total square footage of the mall. The state owns a little piece, you can see right over there along I-91, we're debating whether we would need that piece or not to complete our redevelopment. And then you'll see here, as I get to the site plan, our plan, outside of the Target, everything would come down. So everything would be demolished, including the Sears- So everything would be demolished, including the Sears. The Sears is on a, we talked to Chris and staff about this. This is, I think, worth mentioning. Part of the issue on these mall projects is some of these anchors and tenants can control the space long-term, and Sears has a lease until 2037. So we will need to deal with those folks. And if you don't, they technically can control the space until 2037. So you're kind of stuck with what you see today unless you're proactive and you can figure out how to get that lease either terminated or move on. So. Few more mall stats here. I think this is just a close-up shot. I think we all know that the square has seen its better days. One of the things we will have to do is seal off the Target. There is an access. I don't know if anybody's been in the mall here lately, but there is an internal access. And so that will need to get sealed off. So Target will just have its own independent exterior access to their store. This is just an aerial, current mall conditions. The Landmark team put this together. This is kind of interesting, a little timeline. If anybody hasn't seen this, it is very interesting. So Macy's closed in 2016. Looks like Ruby Tuesday's closed in 2016 as well. Then Sears actually has closed. So Sears is technically just paying dead rent, but they closed in 2016. Namdar acquired the mall in 2019. Looks like Outback closed in 2022. And then some of the deferred maintenance issues of the property, which is pretty customary for these predominantly vacant malls, started happening kind of early 2000s. But there was a roof leak and issues with the sprinkler systems in 2023. Looks like the city of Enfield needed to make some emergency repairs. And then there was a Wall Street Journal article. I don't know if anybody's, if everybody's seen it or not seen it, on the Zombie Mall. It's worth a read. And so the Wall Street Journal ran a story about the square. And then Cinemark closed just at the end of last year at the mall. So I think it's everything we all kind of already know, but just a few interesting dates, enclosures, and things like that that we wanted to bring to everyone's attention. The other thing, there's some existing site constraints here, and we're going to work with our civil team. Obviously, there's a floodway going through part of this property in addition to a floodplain, which is taking, it has a real impact on the development capability of the site. And so this is something we're spending a lot of time with our civil engineering firm, trying to understand, you know, predominantly on the southern end of the site, how much of this is technically developable. Parking lots you can typically put into floodplain areas. Building footprints, you can't. So we'll have to do some, some creative engineering and design work to really try to maximize the site for what we can do on the southern end of the site, which will just add cost. It adds cost typically. And so, so what are we going to do? So the next few slides will really kind of talk you through our plan, our vision for the redevelopment of the property. As Chris mentioned, it's a $250 million redevelopment of the existing mall. There'll be 165,000 feet of new retail. And the retail, you can kind of see, I'm not great with colors, but we'll call this red. You may disagree with me. But, so this would be retail. We'd have some smaller outlaw retail in addition in front of Target here along Freshwater. So you can see that a little bit here. I think there's a bigger shot of the site plan here on the next page. Two new hotels that would capture the interstate visibility. We think there's the capacity to do a nice sit-down restaurant here up in the northwest corner, and then multifamily housing in the southwest corner of the site. So those are the uses. Here you go. This is a little bigger shot of the plan. So again, everything in red, everything along Freshwater, this is all retail. We think this orientates really well. Obviously, Target faces to the east. I think I have that right directionally. So we think the retail should also face to the east towards Freshwater. The housing would be more towards the back or the rear. There'd be sort of a boulevard here that you could drive through with angled parking. And again, just trying to give this pedestrian access. So we'll have sidewalks, the ability to walk through the overall project. You know, obviously, the residents in the housing will want to make sure they can, you know, get to Target, if they want to get groceries, things of that nature. And then the two hotels and the restaurant here on the west side along I-91. So that'll kind of give you a feel for how we would envision redeveloping the site. And then our design team put together some, some building massings. So you can see this. And so, and then we've got some renderings included here as well. So this would be looking north. This would be looking, I think this would be from the east looking west. So you could see Target here, the multifamily in the back. These would be three or four-story structures, the retail up front. Some other shots. This would be looking more towards the south and west. This is kind of piggybacked off of the buildings we did in Logan, which we really, really liked. We liked the aesthetic look of those buildings. And so you can see the housing concept here. Another shot of the retail, just looking to the west. This is a little bit about the Zombie Mall story and sort of reviving the square. And then we can talk a little bit about an executive summary. Chris touched on a lot of these points, but we'll go into kind of what the request is of the town. And as we mentioned, it's a $250 million project. Square has been an integral, integral part of your community for 50 years. Housing will be a big focus for us here. There'll be about 450 multifamily housing units. That'll get constructed over multiple phases. And then with the town and the state's support, our hope would be to potentially be able to start something Q4 or Q1 of next year as far as actual construction activity. I think this next slide, here you go. So this is really, and our experience has been on these large mall redevelopments, public-private partnership is key. Building a relationship with the community, with, with the town staff, Chris, that's how these projects get done. Without that, the costs are just so extraordinary. They're always typically well-located sites, but it's true public-private partnership at its finest. That's how we've been successful on the previous projects we had talked a little bit about or I had mentioned. And so that's really what we have done. We've worked with Chris and his team over the last, really probably last 30 days to really drill down on what is it that we need in order, from the, just the town's perspective. Obviously, we've got to go handle the state here afterwards, assuming their support. But what do we need to try to get this project off the ground? And so this, and we talked a little bit about this, but it would be extending the Tiff District through 2045. We'd be asking the town for a tax freeze, a freezing, the overall tax base at 7.262 million. There'd be a credit enhancement agreement added, sort of to the back end, with a base set of $12.8 million. Project reimbursement beginning 50% with a 2% annual decrease thereafter. And then we talked a little bit about the $500,000 in pursuit. And really, the pursuit cost will be to work with our civil team, legal folks, grant writing, environmental work, some level of design on the multifamily so we can get true pricing. So those are the type of things that with the Tiff funding of $500,000 and then our funding of $500,000, that million dollars, that's really where we'll be focused on spending that money. And so we just want to make sure that's clear. And then obviously, we talked about the state funding, the CIF of really our, our request there is no less than $20 million, which we understand is an extraordinary ask of the state. Hopefully, the state thinks it's a worthwhile project. And then brownfield remediation and development of 6 million. So those would be the two state programs that, and we've had multiple calls, multiple meetings. So we feel strongly that hopefully the state will support that type of level of investment. Condemnation, always a fun topic to talk about. So in our experience of doing these mall redevelopments, there occasionally can be a holdout tenant or a difficult tenant that says, we're not leaving. We love our mall, even though it's 95% vacant. We are staying, and we need a humongous check. And so unfortunately, we've ran into those cases where we've just incurred tenants that are just unreasonable. And in that case, we would ask the town to get involved and help us to condemn any of those leasehold interests. We have really scrubbed this fairly well. The nice thing on Enfield is it is predominantly pretty vacant. Some of our other projects have been a little bit more leased than Enfield. And so, but I will say, and I think I can say this in a public setting, Sears does have a tendency at times to be a little bit difficult in these circumstances. We have had very productive conversations with those folks. So we're hopeful and optimistic that, that that can come to a resolution without using any kind of public tool like this. But this would be something we want to bring to the council's attention, that if a tenant is unreasonable and we can't work something out. And I should also clarify, not necessarily just from a leasehold tenant perspective, there's, these old malls are loaded with old private covenants. I mean, they've been there for 50 years. There's covenants on parking agreements, on access drives, on, there's a laundry list. If we gave you a copy of the covenants, it's hundreds of pages of documents that our legal team will go through. And so some of those, we try to abide by those as much as we can, but some of them just don't apply when you're creating a blank slate and you're totally starting over. And so, so that may be another scenario where we potentially would, would ask the town to use the tool if we need to. Our hope is that doesn't happen, but we want to bring it up. We want to be transparent. We want to make everyone aware that if we need to. It's obviously a last resort, but it's a tool we may need to use. I talked a little bit about the schedule. If we can keep everything moving, there's a possibility we could start something this year. It will likely push into 2025. These are big projects. Lots of upfront planning is required, but we're really excited. Let's see. And with that, we're ready to field any questions.
Great presentation. I'll start at the end. Councilman Santinella.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's good to see you again. I have just a couple of questions. And this is, first one is just out of curiosity. So you've looked at a lot of Namdar properties around the country. Can you kind of just give us some sense of where the condition of this mall lies compared to all of the other ones that you've seen?
Sure. I would say Enfield's probably one of the worst we've seen. I don't want to sugarcoat it. It's, the vacancy is unbelievable. The condition of the property is, is in really difficult shape. So, yeah, I mean, I can't, I don't know, we've been to maybe, Namdar owns 180 malls. We've maybe been to 40 of them, 50 of them. I mean, we certainly haven't been to all of them. But I would say Enfield's been one of the worst that we've seen.
Okay, thank you. So in your purchase and sale agreement, I'm assuming that some of the things we covered earlier today are part of the contingencies that you need in place to be able to move forward with the actual transfer of the property.
Right.
A big one is obviously going to be what the state does or does not do. So, two questions. What if we don't get the $20 million from the state? And how would you, how do we move forward at that point? And what other contingencies are there that we may not have covered that might be worth us knowing about now?
I think right now, unless there's alternative funding, if we don't receive the 20 million from the state funding, we probably are not doing the project.
Okay.
I think it's that important. And so, so yeah, I think that's, that's a really key part of the funding mechanism for this project. Other contingencies that would hold us back or not allow the project to move forward, I'm not aware of any at this time. I mean, I think we'll go through, I mean, we're, we've done a lot of preliminary due diligence, but you know, assuming council's supportive here, and we put the million dollars up, then it's, you know, we're going to be spending money on everything, you know, geotech, permitting, environmental, tenant leases, you know, finalizing. At this point, we've just had productive conversations with Sears. That needs to get finalized. We're not going to close on the property unless all the tenant leases are essentially done. So we know that there's not a, an issue with a tenant holding us hostage or holding the project hostage. So we'll want to get all those negotiated.
Okay, thank you. And my, my last comment, or my last question is about the current tenants, even though there's 15% of the property is occupied by, 15% of the property is occupied. It is occupied by a lot of small business owners and people who put their heart and soul into their businesses. And being a small business owner, I understand what that's like and the risk that goes along with that. What is the plan, if any, to, for those folks? Because I just, I'd really like to know how, what their, what their options are.
Yeah, great question. I think our intent would be to try to provide any of those smaller tenants, locally-owned businesses, as much notice as possible. But I do think, being upfront, they should consider to be looking for other space. Especially, our issue has been, and we've, again, we've kind of seen it all and experienced it all, a lot of these tenants want to have continuously operate while we don't want to have any downtime. We just simply can't do that on these mall projects. We've attempted that in multiple other projects. It's a logistical nightmare. And so we just tell these tenants right now, if you want to, if you want to consider coming back, once we're done, I mean, we've got two years of major construction and redevelopment. And so to try to go build a 10,000-foot building preemptively before the whole mall's torn down so we can get somebody moved in there and get utilities operating to it, we've been down that path and have elected on our last few projects. Hey, we just simply can't do it. If you want to relocate somewhere else temporarily for two years and then consider coming back, once we're done with our project, absolutely.
Right. I, I get that. And the continuous operation thing is impossible in a circumstance like this. Not like you're putting up a new facade and people can continue to just do their, conduct their business. So I just, Namdar has been pretty predatory as a landlord for some of these small businesses. I just, I mean, I'm aware of the conditions of some of their leases that are in place, and they're incredibly generous and, or they're inexpensive, right? Just to serve Namdar's purpose. I just would like to really have, if there's anything that can be done to sort of give people proper notice, give them time to react and help them, I, I would feel really good to have, if we could have something in place or some process in which we can actually facilitate whatever the end result is going to be for those folks. And that may not fall on you. It may be something that the town can do or through our economic and community development. But I think, I just get nervous when I see so many small businesses being displaced at once like that. So.
I do think, I do think, and we've experienced this as well, I do think that these tenants, most of them are in what's called a license agreement. It's not a true long-term lease agreement. And so if they read their lease agreement, which hopefully they did, or they should, that they're paying a reduced rent, but with the flexibility that you do have to move out, right? So it's sort of a give and take. It was a negotiation on the front end. And to Namdar's credit, these license agreements, from our perspective, as a redeveloper of their properties, are much more conducive. It's not a long-term lease that you're bound to, like, for instance, the Sears.
Right.
So I would say that I think predominantly most of the tenants left, we'll confirm that, are in these license agreements.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Santinella and I were kind of thinking the same thing. So my only comments are about the tenants. I think you talked about tenant relocation and termination in a couple of your slides, and then talked about the temporary tenants, which I think that we're referring to as sort of your small business and local. And I understand, you know, you're talking about temporary because of the temporary because of the licensing agreements and things like that. So what I would love to see as part of sort of the partnership that you would have with the town, is working with economic development, is working with the town in trying to relocate some of those smaller business and local businesses from that mall where they are. Because there's, I want to say the majority of them, like you said, are small and local businesses. So if we can find another place for them comparable and it is suitable in Enfield, I would love to see the town, and I know we will, work with you and work with the tenants on trying to get them other suitable places. So it's not really a question, it's sort of a comment, but not to belabor the point that Councilor Santinella said, that, I guess that is sort of my one worry. I'll let you guys deal with the big-box stores, but the little ones, I'd like to try to find a way to help them as well.
Right, right.
Councilman Crissati.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that presentation. Couple of questions. First of all, your project schedule. Not even talking in regard to that, but do you have a specific timeframe with your, with your talks with Sears, number one? Because that seems to be a hiccup in the road, all right? And do you have a specific timeframe with the state of Connecticut in terms of, are we going to, are they going to allocate to you either through a Brownsville grant of your requesting $6 million, and then the $20 million from the state of Connecticut? How long are you willing to wait to hear an answer from them? And if you don't get the full amount, are you willing to work to be, to make some adjustments to make this project work in the event that you don't get your full amount that you're asking for?
Well, I think the state, and I don't have those right in front of me, I think the state gave us some timeframes when we, they would expect.
Yes. The CIF will apply in June, and it takes, you know, as other applications, we filed a few months, four months or so, could be shorter for them to give us an answer back. I will tell you as well, we've told the state and we've added to other people in town who wanted us to join in the CIF applications, that we weren't going to do any others. We wanted to focus completely on the square. I think there are always hurdles. I don't think we can have them answer every question. I don't think they should have to negotiate with Sears in public. I think they've told us where they're at, and we share those things privately where we can, is not to jeopardize that or embolden Sears in some way. But in regard to the state, we have talked to, we've had multiple calls with the state officials, we'll work with them on the application. And then, I don't think this is a crystal ball, I think they've been candid that they're relying on that money. All that the town can do, and so they understand, because every town, state is different, we've done all the town can do with this juncture. We voted to appropriate the TIF money. We voted to do the credit enhancement. We voted to do the tax freeze. We voted to extend the TIF. The town has done all that we have at our disposal, and now it'll be up to the state. And I think it's a good question, Bob, but I wouldn't want to put them on the spot. I think they already alluded to that they pretty much need that $20 million. And if they don't get it, I'm sure they'll try to look at other avenues, but I don't think they'd be in a position tonight to say exactly where they'll be. I think it'll depend on other costs that come in and other leases that they're able to enter into. And just in regard to Gina and John, Christie, I mean, when I first came back, Steve and I went to the square. We talked to the tenants. We helped them with letters to NAMDAR to get security there and to get some management. We assisted them as best we could. Christie's reached out to Eastfield Mall to see how they relocated their tenants. Aaron, we told him that that would be a priority with these folks. We try to feed the council when we have dinners on occasion from the businesses in the square. We've purchased some of these and jackets from the vendors in the square. So we've done all we can to support the small businesses, and we'll continue to do that on our end. I think these folks, it's limited, they'll give them plenty of notice, they'll let us know the lay of the land, and then we'll have our staff in economic development do everything within their power to help relocate those who will be displaced. Fortunately, you know, it's been talked about for quite some time. I know the manager there confirmed it was for sale, so the tenants are on notice. Nobody ever likes to get that news, that you want to stay, right? It's like people down in Florida and the Key West, "A hurricane's coming." Well, a lot of them don't want to leave. They know it's coming, but they don't want to believe it. So we'll work with them and accommodate them collaboratively as best we can.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't looking for an exact answer or anything, but it's just broad questions that I am asking.
I think, I think we're going to, I think we're going to put our best foot forward with the town and the grant writer to hopefully put it, be in a great position to get the state funding that we're, but I don't, I agree with Chris. I don't think I can answer your question if, if there's a Plan B. Right now, there really isn't a Plan B.
Okay.
We're sticking with Plan A, and we're hopefully going to be successful with Plan A.
The thing that I like is that you've taken NAMDAR properties and turned them around, so that's exciting to hear as a council, and being involved with all the problems that we've had with NAMDAR over the past few years with their neglecting of the building and things that we had to do against NAMDAR. And so you're familiar with a lot of their actions and activities, so, so I am ecstatic. I do like your plan, you know, with the market apartments, just the way everything is lined up that you have with, you know, restaurants, hotels. I'm all in, so let's get it done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out to our great town of Enfield. We appreciate it. Presentation was great. Couple of the questions that I have probably have already been answered almost in its entirety, but I want to get back to the alternate funding. If for some reason you don't have success with the state, you mentioned maybe alternate funding you could go to? And I'm not sure how that would work or what your plan is on that.
I'll just jump in. I think that they said the opposite of that, they're relying on the agreements that we've put forward. They're going to rely on the state funding. I'm glad we've clearly articulated that we need the state's help in a big way here. We're going in eyes wide open. We're saying, these folks came forward when we've had no other interest of anybody who is a viable developer. They have a great track record, they have great financing, they have a great record of they build these and they keep them. So I think we should try to be positive and not be thinking about, you know, the sky is falling. Let's let them give it their best shot. We'll work with our state legislators and the council to try to get the funding we need. But I think we could what-if it to death, and they don't have those answers, so I think we're all on notice that if we don't get proper permitting, if we don't get proper, you know, regulatory things granted and state funding, that the project won't go forward. But I think this is the closest to success that we're going to get in Enfield. If this opportunity fails, given their track record and their commitment to Enfield, I would predict that that mall will just rot into the ground in decrepitude. You have to understand, NAMDAR, when I talked to them when I was still here, they kept it because their market research showed that it was a prime location, but the mall itself, they weren't going to put any money in. And what I asked them to do and what they did not do is what they've done in other parts of the country. A distribution center, trucks, a calling center, a decrepit blighted mall that will rot into the ground and will be left with zero taxes. So I want to state, I know the council is being fiscal, we should be on our feet, I believe, clapping. And maybe people at home will tell, "Oh, well, you know, I'm too optimistic." My goodness, does any, these folks have done an incredible job. We're lucky to have them here, and I hope we all just give them a hell of a round of applause and a standing ovation, and we'll address the other scenarios as they come due. Thank you.
Chris also mentioned he may personally step in and cover the difference, so.
John Santinella could.
I saw the question. Okay, go ahead.
The, I would say, I would say this, I appreciate that, Chris, and we have had a great track record, and we're thankful for that. I would say, hold the applause, right? This is step one of a 15-step process, but the support is fantastic. This is how things get done. And so I think, you know, first and foremost, we do appreciate the support. Let's get the applause. When we get the state funding, then we all do the applause and the high fives.
I just want to say thank you again. And it's reassuring to know, as my prior colleagues have questioned relocation of tenants, I'm happy to hear that you're, you know, willing to work to get the tenants, you know, where they need to be. No displacement, so, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Mike, welcome to Enfield.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice to meet you. And I think it was touched on, I think, I think where people get lost in some of this. Is this your first development on these kind of malls in the Northeast? Curious.
Yes, in the Northeast it is.
So you've done, I'm assuming, some market research, if you're going to, if you're willing to put in print, whether you get there or not, $200-something million, so you've done some market research. I think people need to learn that little perspective on some of the things that you see. If you're willing, again, to commit that kind of money at some point, you know, whether the, no matter how the project evolves, there's something there, right? You commit because you can make money.
Right.
That's the point. You can make money. And so, first of all, I think that's, that's my only question really, is first of all, welcome to the Northeast. I mean, I think you do, you have a perfect location to make tons of money. If you've, I'm sure you've done your market research on the location between Boston and New York. You got a perfect little enclave right off the highway. You got a connection to the, one of the most beautiful river in the Northeast, in the Connecticut River. So if you could give a little perspective on the research on why this is, at least, without giving your details, an attractive proposal to come into the Northeast.
I think a piece of that, Mike, that's really unique, at least to Enfield, and Drew mentioned it, we've, we've looked at, you know, probably 50 to 60 of NAMDAR's malls, redeveloped four of them. What is very unique in this situation is that all the pieces are together.
Right.
A lot of NAMDAR's malls, and even the other three that are in Connecticut, are chopped up. They do the call centers, they sell off a box.
Exactly.
And at some point, they just become undevelopable. This one is unique, where it largely is, with the exception of Target, one cohesive development that you can truly do a mixed-use redevelopment project. So that's probably the biggest thing. That's, it's very uncommon that they are. NAMDAR very often sells them off. They're trying to sell off a couple of these pieces now.
And that's my, I think, my point or question or statement, is that this is a nice, so as you've expanded, it sounds like you did a lot of Midwest, now you're sort of expanding your, you know, some of the NANDAR. I don't know where else he has them around the country. I think he has a couple up north, I believe, right? Correct?
Yep.
So, again, we welcome to being your foothold into the Northeast, because again, if you're going to put $200 million in a piece of paper, whether you get there spending it or not, you've done your market research, you understand what you can make, and that's the whole point of this, is that, again, there's going to be steps. Good news is, we're taking steps forward as opposed to, okay, we got a mall that's been sitting there for 50 years, unfortunately, and we've sort of been stuck.
Right.
So, thank you very, nice to meet you. Welcome to Enfield.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Thank you very much. It's exactly what I wanted in our mall. But my question is, do you use local contractors when you're doing your demolition and building? Do you try to use local contractors?
Yeah, I would say our short answer is yes. We typically do. I mean, depending on size and scale, it's not somebody directly in Enfield, but a lot of times, it's more subcontractor-based, you know, if you're building 300 housing units, can the plumber and the electrician, do they have enough scale and size to do those type of projects? So, but I think we would look locally first. That would be our intent.
So that, to me, means opportunities for employment.
Yeah.
And so that in itself, I think is something I hope the state will look at, is that, you know, because these people have to stay somewhere while they're doing a job. If they're coming in from out of state, they're going to have to stay here and spend money as well. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate this, and I hope it goes through.
All set? Thank you, Marie. Councilman Angier.
Thank you for your presentation. It was wonderful. We're all really excited about this project, and I get the young people all asking me, "Can it be a cool coffee place that we can hang out in?" And so now I can kind of guide them through your presentation, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
All set, Lori? That was quick, short and sweet. Doug, anything?
Welcome to Enfield. Great job. Can't wait to see the finished product if I'm still alive. If not, I'll dream of it. Thank you.
All right, great.
Councilman Hendrickson.
Same thing. Welcome to Enfield, and I'm excited. It's finally something that we can talk positively about anyway, so, thank you.
Well, I also say the same. Welcome to Enfield. I received a phone call from Landmark four months ago, and it was just a casual conversation. I referred it to Chris, and here we are. And hopefully, this council's sitting here and we can do a great ribbon cutting for you, and welcome everybody to the neighborhood. And you're going to be one of the occupants of the, it's market rate rents, right?
Right, yeah.
Right. Yeah, so I look forward to working with you, and I'm, you have the full support of the town and the council. And I know some of the commissioners on the boards that you're going to have to go through are sitting here also, so let's see what we can do to make it happen. And our state rep and senator, we're in the room, and they're the next step at the state, so.
Good.
All righty. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.